Okay, if you, everybody's got their, uh, phones turned to silent, please, and then we'll go to, uh, call the order at 6:02 PM on February 14th, 2023 with the Newport Planning Board. I'll start with a roll call with Herb on my right.
Herb Keller, Select Board Rep., Randy Gibby, Ken Merrill.
Bert Spaulding, Senior.
And David Burnham, Chair. Bert Spaulding will be sitting for Coben, who is unable to make it tonight.
And Herb is sitting for Jim.
For Jim.
Oh, yes.
Because Jim's a regular, he's the alternate. Agenda review, uh, I think administration wants to update us on the hockey rink?
I, well, I'd like to request that if we, uh, we do have the superintendent of schools here, that Donna came to just listen to an overview of what we found out about that hockey rink and the land, uh, and I was going to request that that be moved prior to continued business, if, if you approve.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we, uh, move that conversation first on the list.
Second.
And we have a second by Bert. All of them favor say aye?
Aye.
All of them opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Go ahead.
So what, first of all, what I would like to say is if anyone has comments or wants to participate in a discussion about the hockey rink, they could do that during the public communications. This was just to give you an update that, I don't know if it's fortunate or unfortunate, but the hockey rink was built on land that was purely designated for recreational purposes. And regardless of it being a donated land, it has to stay that way unless there is a replacement of kind somewhere else. And it doesn't have to abut or be adjacent to the school or that property. And the other main thing that was found, and this is all going to have to be worked on prior to permitting, because it was one of your conditions, I just wanted to update you because it's such an anomaly, that, um, the school has been working with the state, getting some information. Uh, I've gotten a lot of information mostly from, uh, residents here on finding this grant. And, um, after this, I'm planning on, for the most part, updating the town manager of where he wants to go forward with it because the school and, the town manager and the superintendent at the time, I think it was 1995, it started in the seventies, but I think the hockey rink came into possession in 1995. Uh, the names of the school superintendent and town manager are on all the paperwork together, signing for everything. So instead of this just being like a school issue or oops, it's a town issue, it's kind of like we're both in, in it together. And, uh, I just wanted to broach you on that. And hopefully we can have some kind of agreement so they can permit with the other conditions, you guys, I need to, I, there's a few other things I have to do too, but be able to satisfy all the conditions that you requested to build the vocational school on that location. But presently, presently, as I understand it, we have to come up with some solution prior to permitting because this land is designated strictly for recreation, like they did with all the other pieces of the property adjacent to the new agricultural structure. And again, it, yeah, and I, I just wanted to close the circle. And obviously, if you guys continue to have questions or continue want me to update you on the findings of it or whatever, what's going on, I could do that, absolutely.
So it's still unclear from the grant search, who ultimately has ownership, is it town?
It's, we're both, well, uh, the legal might, I've also thought, when I've been talking with Ed Edmonds, that was Ed, Ed E. Bond, I think, that was on the, um, I said maybe even legal, like illegal needs to be involved, but that I think Hunter should decide or BOS or something. But what it looks like is, we both approved, the town and the school, we're working in tandem approving all the money, approving all the conditions, approving that this, this land cannot be used for anything else besides recreational purposes for perpetuity. And so it seems like it, it should be a collaborative effort to me, but if you've got legal councils involved, which I hope wouldn't have to happen, I guess they could argue, no, the town isn't involved or no, the school, I don't, I don't know, that's above me. But from a bird's eye view, it looks like it's a school and town conglomerate, conglomeration.
So from where the building is going, so, I mean, they could, as long as the school, in the interest of putting the building there, agrees that they will replace in time to satisfy that prior agreement.
Well, right. It's not, it could be costly though. Like if the school did that on their own, okay, right, true, absolutely.
The terms of that grant.
I know, absolutely.
No.
Okay, so we've got to kind of get rid of all of the paranoia here and all of the whatever. Um, it's an easy solution, a quid pro quo in property. And the school believes that they have enough to do that. Um, it went forward to here with the impression that we might not have to do that. But it is my understanding, Donna, am I correct, that we have significant other that will, uh, be the, the, uh, exchange for here, which, last thing we're going to see is the breaks on this project, so.
But I mean, that's got to.
That's, yeah, that's not really one person, yeah.
So that has, to me, just listening to what you said and everything, that has to go to conversation between town manager and/or board of selectmen?
I mean, as of right now.
In agreement with the school to satisfy the terms of the.
Of your, yeah, no permits get interest, yeah. And no, you put it on a condition and no permits would be submitted unless someone directly, you know, above me came and told me to permit. But as of right now, they have to satisfy those terms, or come back in here and present to you to have them removed. But the understanding at the state level is, I don't think it needs to hold up permitting by any stretch, but the, it, the half an acre, roughly half an acre, it might be a little more, has to be set aside somewhere else for strictly recreational use. And that's not, I think it could be done, but it's not as easy as, half an acre in Newport's pretty expensive right now.
Well, in any event, that's between, I mean, all it is, is just the, what you call a quid pro quo, or just an agreement.
Yes.
Between school and town.
Yes, exactly.
That this will be done.
Exactly.
Yep.
Yep.
Prior to moving forward with pulling that.
That's, that's easy, yeah.
I, I can, I can testify that it will be done. Uh, we did some hiking today and, uh, measuring and we're fine.
Hiking in the woods?
Uh.
Or, I mean, you can't give a mountainous property with trees on it as a flat.
It does.
It's, it's already, it's already attached to recreational.
Okay.
It can't be land, though, that is already currently used for recreation, because I thought we could go into like the town forest or something. And I was told actually by Ed E. Bond that you can't take recreational land and make it recreational land. And, right. So again, it, it, I just really wanted to say that there, that land does have like a, uh, an issue on it, we just need to solve it. And then the permit, I just, that's all. Since it did come to more than I would have thought it was even that night. I would have thought it was much more, it seems a bigger issue to me, not in the lines of agreement, just of like even monetarily to me, uh, but maybe I'm wrong, than, than I thought that night. I thought it would be easier.
Right, but it's no different than what they did with the basketball court, not the basketball court, the tennis court or soccer field.
They did, and that cost a lot of money to change into, but I think those were like.
But that's a, that's a commitment that's got to be there. Now, what gets put? So it's a rec field for a rec field, is the way I would explain it to me?
It has, the acreage has to be used for some recreational use. It does not have to be designated for hockey rink, although it could be, of course, or any, right.
Right. I think that was the only, that was the conversation, I don't know if you feel that's really important.
Uh, make a note that, uh, Mike Lucio is on board with us now at.
Six ten.
Yes.
You want to hear from me now?
Hey, your business.
Yeah, I'll, I'll open the, the floor for public comments and questions. Ed?
Well, I, I made a call to this guy with the Parks and Recreation today. I've been in contact, looking at the act, different acts about just what you discussed. There's an Act 54 and there's an Act 36, free, all dealing with that same exchange process. And probably by now, it's, I would be, obviously aware of it. And it, and it's the thing, and I'm going to say this word wrong, but obsoleteation is, is one of the conditions where you remove a facility, where someone determines that it's obsolete and it's not usable, but you cannot like put a building there. You have, you have to replace it with, like you said, not necessarily the same thing. It doesn't have to be a hockey rink, it could be anything football field, but it still has to remain open space. And then the other thing is problematic encumbrance. Well, that has to do with, with, uh, if you're, if you're thinking about making the change. And I think that's what people are looking at, is the fact that if you decide you want to put a building there, you have to replace that piece of land and designate it as a, as, you know, as a recreation area. And that has to come from somewhere. And but, and then the other thing he said is this is all incumbent on the town. The thing I didn't understand, there's a lot of signatures on that grant. And she's got a copy of all, like she said, of all the names. But the reality is the grant was made out in the name of the town. So we are the ones that would bear the brunt of any errors that would have happened had this not been, been brought up. Because there's more to just making that swap locally. You need, you need to get the approval of the, the, the arts that, uh, that group down there in Concord. You just, you have to make a request in it. And you say, you say that's already been, been researched. So I would just try to clarify what she, what she said, but I, I found, I, I thought it was a joint grant and I found out, no, the grants are only issued to towns, not, and the schools just made agreements for you, those agreements are just for usage of the property and maintenance, etc. So they agreed back then that we could use it for that, or anybody could use it. And you, you could put a parking lot in there for that matter, if that parking lot were, uh, used for access to recreation. That, that land has to be able to be accessed, or the same amount of land has to be able to be accessed at all times by, by anybody in the whole world, I guess, I don't know where. So, that ain't helped, I don't know, I just hopped in there.
Thanks, Eddie. Does anybody else like this, would you like to say something?
Sure. Um, you nailed it. It was perfect. So the land that, that we want to build, that, that part of the CTE was grant funded. And what they had said is we just need to find a piece of property somewhere else and just, um, say that that is for recreational use. And it doesn't have to be cleared land. They said, they said you could take a, you could have land and you could put, and this was right from the, in Concord. So we've been in contact with Concord for quite a few weeks trying to work through this process. They said if you had woods and you put a bench down there and you said, we're designating this area for bird watching, that's recreational use, that's fine. So you don't have to cut down trees, you don't have to do any of that stuff. You just have to say three-fourths of an acre, three-fourths of an acre, recreational use. And then that's what they said. They did say that it, it shouldn't hold up any permits, though. That's, that's what would concern me if it would hold up permits while we're trying to work through this process. Is as long as you're looking and it's known that this is what the end result is going to be, it shouldn't hold up any of your process of building. If you can go ahead and build on it. But I can get that in writing if, if the board feels that like that in writing.
I mean, I would, I guess from my seat, I would just like to push it back to town manager, board of selectmen.
Absolutely.
For a legal decision.
Yeah, especially if, I had never heard that it's all the town's responsibility because if, once that gets said, like, yeah, I'm just thinking, uh, you see, all this is, I haven't, I was just speaking with Donna, we need this in, we need things in writing. Because if it truly is now the town's, and I do think that regardless of whose it is, the school has seemed very willing to partake in even some of the financial aspects of this. So, but if it is in fact the town and pretend the school said, well, hey, it's the town, our hands are off it. Again, this is kind of above me, it has to go to town manager and BOS to decide the land, the cost of the use. And so, and, and legal.
Yeah, yeah, whatever terms of that agreement that are under, that's all on those.
Right. And whether I hold up permits or not would come from, yeah, that. So I am moving it forward. I was just, it's still on your, you know, it has to be solved one way or another. And it's solving, it is the town and the school have talked and they're in some kind of agreement, even if, and Hunter says, we're in an agreement, it's not written or, but Christina, you could permit, then I permit. And I'll mark that that's, I'll get the email from Hunter and I'll, I'll add that to the, the file, along with the other things we're waiting for prior to permitting. Yeah, it's as simple as that. But it's going, and again, I thought it was, the town and the school were in bed together, but whichever one, whichever what legally it is, I guess is who it falls on.
Okay. Yeah?
I just wanted to say that, and this was brought up, you're right, they'll share the cost. But again, Bert mentioned it last week, this cost is mine. It's a tax base, so this has got to be a consideration. So I, I, maybe the right thing to do on the purpose is possible to hold up, to assure that there's no cost involved. I know you're going to say there won't be a with promise and all that, but you don't know down the road. You've been researching and things like that. But I think that, that, that's the reason I brought it up. And again, plus I think we avoided perhaps too big, the final penalty is, we, we have done this without paperwork on the state, they can hold up grants or, or now, or any of other times.
Yeah, did it, did a list of penalties?
We'll avoid that.
Yeah, I think there are significant, I think most of the penalties are no further funds for anything that is to be, on the state and federal level would be forwarded to you. So actually, I mean, I don't really know how that would, I couldn't even imagine those things coming down. But yeah, I guess that would mean the whole funding for the vocational school, which, I mean, the whole thing, I don't think anything that's going to happen. But yes, that's what they say is the penalty. Until you get this solved, we stop all funding for any project. And any awarded money that would stop. And any, you couldn't go for further awards, that would stop until you solve it. Again, I think it should be easy.
But from what Ed quoted, as long as you have an agreement in principle, then it can move forward while you're working out the details.
And to, again, none of, yes, this is legal and who's responsible, who's going to hold the weight of that? Because there's some value that's going to be, there's some money that's going to be put out somewhere for this. Um, whoever holds that would be up to, uh, yeah.
It's stated, you, you, you know, they can hold grants until there's a, there's a viable solution. So you're likely right. If they say there's something, somebody's still got to do some signatures, and it's going to be the town. It ought to be a lesson. Somebody, how can that get missed? It's, it really surprises me. And I, I, I don't know, I'm not saying you guys are bad people, missing it. Whoever went ahead and did it, the school, you, whatever, but that, it needs to be looked into to see what happens again. And secondly, why wouldn't that be on, isn't that like on tax maps or a mile hour or anything like that? Is that brought up? Is that any indication on the, the property records, if that's there?
I think just based on the footage they took to, the footwork it took to find the documents and everything, I mean, people have changed. The shared responsibility, school to town with all the land, you know, down and up through there, just missed in translation. Nobody had the actual fact in front of them until the documents were looked at.
It should have been added to, yeah, the registry, Sullivan County Registry of Deeds, that portion of the school property was restricted, strictly restricted for recreational use. That it's not up to them to get rid of this or that or the other thing in, in, in full, in this area. And that could have been added, and then it would have been found in a title search, that there was this restriction. Um, but that, I don't even know how to do that. That's, that's someone's operating that.
But in this case, you would need another title search.
Yeah.
We've seen it done correctly. We saw it recently up there by Virginia Owens with the, uh, land that was dedicated.
Right.
It was recorded and properly. Without it being recorded, uh, then you have this delay.
Exactly. Ideally, it should have been recorded and then, again, I think it's going to be easily fixed. I'm just, was telling you that it, the issue, the questionable issue did come out to be an issue. Hopefully it's really small. I'm giving it to Hunter on all the information, yeah. And if he wants me to do legwork on working with whoever to, to, to whatever, I, I don't know, but it's going up that way.
I think that's just the message it has to come out.
Yeah, yeah.
Christina, it's easier than walking on high heels to fix it.
I know, I know, I know. No, it's above, it's above me to decide how to figure this out.
It's easier than walking on high heels. She, you know, I noticed her height increased here tonight.
I thought you were talking about your choice of footwear.
Okay, if there's no more questions, we'll go on to, back to our original, uh, continued business, which was a request to continue from 2022 SPFP 3, North Newport L. and Holdings LLC, request final review to approve a site for the property identified as map 218 lot 004. The proposal is to construct a 96 unit housing complex, property is located on North Main Street in the Rose zoning district. And again, that was a request to continue by the advocate, advocate.
Chair, I will step down for this because of the conflict and you have a quorum.
They, they declined to.
Oh, you're talking about the withdrawal, okay. Um, but I, okay, I'm.
Do we have a date certain?
So, yeah, you have to vote, you have to vote to continue and then the date certain, and why don't I always have, I should, is March 14th? No, I apologize. I believe there's, I think it's March 21st is our date next month. We had to move it back a week. That is in town meeting, is it?
Yes, it is. No, not for you guys, school meeting, school.
Oh, okay, so we moved it to March. It's March 21st at 6:00 PM is the date certain to continue if you, if you approve a continuance.
I'll make a motion that we continue Case 2022 dash SPFP dash 3 until March 21st, '23.
Second. We have a motion, a second, all of them favor?
Aye.
All of them opposed? Yes.
Was the time given?
No, 6:00 PM.
Six, 6:00 PM, yeah.
Please include.
Thank you. Okay, we'll come back there again. All of them favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Okay, uh, going on to new business. We'll start with 2023 SPFP 1, 169 Centiphi Street LLC, owner Ron DeCola, agent, request final review to approve site plan for the property identified as map 114 lot 032. The proposal is a new construction for a multi-unit housing complex. The property is located at 21 Cross Street in the industrial zoning district.
There's also the large scales, um, of these. These are the, the large. I don't know if there's room or you have that.
I think this is for just the addition, right?
No, this is for a whole new complex. Maybe you want the large. One's open.
Well, it's the same as this in here, right?
It is. I just didn't know. Sometimes, there's two, there's, there's multiple sets. It is absolutely the same. And I did give additional handout of elevation and floor plans, uh, the, the, in, on the top.
Christina, can you hear me?
Yes, Ron, I can. They're still reviewing.
But John can put that up on the big screen if he'd like him to. It would make it easier for the board members.
You know what? It's unfortunate. I can't, oh, I did get it on. Do you want to see this?
Yeah, I would just need, you have to enable screen sharing for me.
Here's another part of it. And I gave you that.
Yeah.
That's.
The entrance and the egress is going to be.
Huh?
Not the whole thing, it's just, yeah, we already, the whole, we.
The river, yeah.
This is the building down here. All the building, all the lot layout, all the everything. There aren't a building. There's a lot line, there's a footprint of a building, there are nothing else. I cannot, you can't, I don't know how you can do it. It's not complete.
If you, if you look on this pa, this page with, I think it's like 10 pages in, Dave, it shows the two u, separate units.
Yeah.
One will be on, the new one's on Central Street.
Yeah.
Same piece of property.
I thought, no, no, like, no, same piece of property.
Yeah.
This is a new structure, which, I don't know if they have a problem with the submission, doesn't have buildings.
I did submit, I did submit a checklist, and they seem to have everything besides DES application. Obviously, you can disagree with me, but I did get copies of the checklist.
That's what I was going through, checklist, and on the, on one of them, it's got things on it, three, four, five, go. Mylar, not applicable. It's applicable to the building.
We don't have Mylar for, until it's approved, we have to make the Mylar.
Okay.
And, and then submit it to the, to the registry. But, because they were so expensive, we had, we had, I usually brought them in after you approved. If it, whether it's this meeting or another meeting, I would bring it after. I would have.
So, I mean, for instance, you know, you got Highway, with their comment, last one, need full set of construction plans. I don't know how fire can look at this and approve it without full set of construction plans. We don't have a full submission.
What was High, what was, you don't ask for full set of construction plans under.
I'm just reading the comments that are on there.
Well, actually, this is a state road, so Highway Department, I don't know if they would want, they have actually requested traffic impact study. That would be DOT. I think impact for pedestrians would also, and sidewalks would also be oversight of DOT. And I also think that full set of construction plans are done when you come to permit. So that seems like an odd, all those seem like somewhat of an odd request considering it's a state road. Water and sewer would obviously have, and they did have planes in there for water and sewer, and to follow any town warrants. Well, yeah, this is, Central Street's a state
The Highway Department is asking for a traffic impact study, and pedestrian traffic, sidewalks, street lighting, and a set of plans. Because evidently, they're going to tie into town.
Again, the traffic, I think that would, I think that would be DOT's request. It's a state road. So I don't think it's the purview. Now, if you guys want, I think it would be DOT requesting that. Uh, this, the town highway department has no oversight on Central Street. It's.
So that's, that's a state highway. I thought Centiphi Street was the state highway.
Central is a, is a state road. And so they don't have any oversight to, unless, and now I will say the state might ask for a traffic study themselves. The state might ask, oh, no, they already got approval. They already got approval from DOT.
Christina, Christina, may I, may I request something with the board? And, and would you allow us to make our presentation? I think we can clear up a lot of your questions if we allow them to make our presentation.
They're just going through your paperwork, I believe, Ron, and then I think they're going to clear it up. I think they're, I think.
I have some questions and we can answer them.
I know. I agree. Probably way better than I. I.
I don't get it.
You see the thing on the states, Senate?
This is new.
Yeah. From here and here. There you go. I gave mine to Banner. Oh, sure.
Christina, that section, what they're going to use for their driveway, uh, that's
Christina, that section, what they're going to use for their driveway, that's the rail, rail trail, part of the rail trail. Is there any covenants or anything dealing with that section of.
For the driveway?
For, well, for that.
No, for the rail trail.
For the railroad bed.
For the walkway?
Section.
The railroad bed.
Where the railroad used to be, that's going to be their driveway.
Again, the driveway was approved by DOT.
I know.
But they can't go on to this, what the state has taken as right of way for that rail.
But wouldn't DOT then not, that's DOT.
They wouldn't know unless they looked at a.
But they're the, but that's their state.
They do the road.
They were looking at the road, not the driveway access.
They actually did. That is what they do, the driveway access. That's how you get a driveway permit for Central Street.
But they wouldn't be considering that that was the old railroad bed.
So the entry to Central Street is the old railroad bed?
Yes.
Okay, I can look into it.
And it goes through Newton Marvellous and across Main Street and down around the people.
So let, let me call DOT and see if they rescind their approval.
I don't even know if that's part of it. Maybe that section isn't owned by the state or something. I don't.
I'll have to ask. That would be up to them because it's, it's the state approving a driveway permit on state land. So, but I will broach it with them and see if there was a mistake made.
I don't know. Yeah, I thought it was up into their purse.
Typically, DOT is pretty thorough. But again, I can call them and question their approval if you'd like. Well, the state, the state approved it. So who would get in trouble? The state. So, I mean, you're kind of in a catch 22, but I will call them. I will call them.
Okay, well, that will be one of the conditions.
You're putting two properties, two buildings on the same property in two different locations that are going to have to have two different addresses.
Because the entrance and egress are on two different roads.
Don't you have to self-divide that property? They're going to have two addresses.
Depending on that song.
Nobody's going to know where to go.
It's industrial.
Yeah. If a fire gets called, then how are they going to know what building it is?
They would get a different 911 address. I mean, like Diamond Falls, they've got one piece of property.
Yeah, the property is 21 Cross on the other one. And this one's going to be Central. One, one address will be Cross and will be Central.
But you can, you just have to look at this.
And there's another issue with fire had a problem with the road, with access around.
Well, if you look at the riverside, the river 50 feet, and the river comes right up to back into that road. So, another one of my questions for this, I mean, we don't have building sections or any, we don't know height, area. We do have a height limitation. We don't have a height on this building. We don't have any plans to indicate anything. We got a picture from somewhere. We have floor plans, but that's all we have. So, I can't see it as complete until we get those plans. And we can't copycat what we did with the other building because it's a different building.
I think they do have the elevation of this structure.
Where?
On the bigger maps?
I'm not sure. If that's one of the, if that's one, is there any other sticking point, an elevation number? Because if that's the only, I would.
It's not a number either. It's a, it's an understanding of the building because, like Fire, as I already stated, he's got to get access around three sides. If this building's 40 feet high, then that.
All I was saying, all I was saying is I could ask if they have this in the paperwork or if you're going to not accept it as complete because of that. Fire, they're doing that if they, if they have that. But that was it. But, or I guess accept it or have it.
All I see on here is the elevation of the primary floor above the parking deck at 797. I don't see any elevated floors at all. Like I said, I mean, if Fire looks at it to get around, now, if he's got to get a truck around the backside, ladder, can he reach with what he's got? Those kind of concerns come in.
John? John?
John Hoke?
Yeah. John, you were going to get me elevation numbers today. Correct or no?
I have, I have everything as a PDF that I can put up on the screen right now. The elevation of the outside of it, all the different floor plan levels, everything.
I thought that was in this packet. So it's in the packet you sent me. I don't have the elevation numbers. But yeah, if you could put that up, that'd be great. Or maybe send it to my email and I can print it out. I thought it was in this packet you sent me. I do have the floor plans, but I don't necessarily see the elevation.
Yeah, the architect finalized stuff this afternoon. He sent it to us and Ron and I have it in our presentation thing that I was going to put up on the screen to show you guys.
Okay, well, I needed the elevation for their, I needed the elevation. So yeah, I'd put that up on the screen or if you could send it to me.
I can't, you have to allow, you have to allow me to do a screen sharing. I can't.
Oh, okay, hold on.
He's got to be able to, if he understands that this is this high, three floors or.
Okay.
I mean, he doesn't have to play the information.
Uh, hold on, how do I do this? I think I have to make you the host. Okay, John, you should be all set.
Before this goes too long and getting it here for this meeting, that violates the public's right to know and review beforehand when the application is presented should be complete. If it's not complete, this has to be continued.
I, that's exactly where I'm.
So to try and get it today over to us is in fact violating the whole intent of the process.
So it's just the eleva, so I'm just trying to get what you're missing.
We need building plans.
Building plans.
We need elevations, we need floors, we need.
You have the floor plans.
Right, we need that set. So you can review it in whole. You know, the fire chief looking at it, seeing two planes.
He looked at it already. Okay, so, so I'm a little lost on the floor plans because I need to know what to ask them. So.
We need a plan set, a building plan set. Floor plans, elevations, including heights.
The floor plans are right here. So what opposed to this do you?
So tell me on the floor plans, do we get over 40 feet? Can you tell?
Well, that's elevation. So we're missing elevation. I've got that. You said floor plans.
Yeah, that's in the floor plans. It's all brought in at once.
Fine, we're missing.
And this picture as an elevation is not a planned submission.
Okay, so the elevation we have, we've got the floor plans, we need elevation. That's what we're missing. I agree.
Elevation in, is a dimension, but this is called elevations north, south, east, west, so that you can look at.
Absolutely.
Character of the building and all of that that we purview.
Okay, yep.
Okay.
And what else was?
So that's.
That's it, just the elevations then.
You know, so where are the utilities coming in? Water, sewer?
I think that's all in the plans on page.
Mr. Chairman, we have all this ready to go. If you just let us make our presentation.
If we don't have it, we can't make a decision. We can't even accept it as complete.
You have the sewer construction details, you have the, you have the, you have the stop signs, you have the, you have the slope stabilization, grass lines, construction sequence. So you have all the sewer, let's see, hold on.
This is just a mini of that one anyway.
Yeah, it's on here. Sorry.
You have the utility trenches, the lighting. So, so this is almost identical to a plan that was approved about a year ago, what was submitted here. Matter of fact, here, this has more information, more detail in it. So that's why I'm slightly confused at how you accepted it, where it's, that's why I just need it, so I can help them so they can move forward next month. But we can, I could always do that outside of this office.
I believe in that submission, we had building plans that showed, we had complete elevations that showed, because the neighbors were there saying, I've got to look at this thing that's three stories high that I'm looking at.
I've got.
And I have concerns, and we talked about those concerns.
I've got, we're missing the elevation. That's absolutely true. Besides that, do we have everything else?
From a civil perspective, it looks fine, but.
Oh, okay, then that's fine, then that's it. You're right, we did not get the elevation.
Christina, there's not a checklist for applications?
There isn't. I have it submitted.
And does it have in it the elevations?
I believe so, and let's see.
It says that drainage, exterior lighting, plans for water, power, telephone, wells, water pipes, power and telephone poles and lines.
Number seven.
And conceptual plans, floor plans, exterior elevations, unless waived, of all proposed structures on the site.
Yes, exterior elevations. And I did, I did.
And they've got here checked off as yes, and we don't have that.
You don't have, you have everything but the elevations, yes, that's true. The conceptual floor plans, and yes, we have. So it's still the elevations.
Christina, I want to make one more point. The whole reason, the whole reason for having the process mailed out to me at Butters and for the public view is usurped if in fact information comes here that wasn't available before. So even if it could be here in the next five minutes, the hearing cannot go forward. End of story. So.
Absolutely. There have been exceptions made if something's missing to bring it in or not approve it until they get that, but that's absolutely fine. You're right, if everything is not on the checklist of that, you can state that it's Or state to waive it to next time. But I agree.
So six, on the checklist, six, seven, and 14.
So six is the.
Shape, size, and location.
Well, they've got.
Of existing and proposed.
They've got the shape and the location of the structure.
We have a shape in this one. We don't have all three.
Right, that's the elevation. So we're back to the elevation and then what was the?
Seven is elevations.
And then you said four. We have exterior lighting, it's on page seven.
But as we experienced with the bank down the street, if all of a sudden lights show up on the side of this building, which we don't have elevations for, we can't review that. So 14 comes in as well.
They have that on page seven. I thought they had the lighting.
No. Anyway, for those reasons, it was. Okay.
The.
Make a motion. I make a motion that we do not accept 2023 SPFP-1 as complete for item 6, 7, 14 of the checklist.
Could you please be a little more specific with six? Six?
Six, item six, the shape, size, and location. So we have flat plans, we show one floor, we don't show all the floor, we don't show the height, area of this building, roof profile, none of it. Which lends yourself to item seven, which is also conceptual plans, floor plans, elevations, et cetera. And then 14, anything that's like lighting that shows up on the exterior of this building cannot be approved unless you see it on those elevations. Because, case in point, the bank where we had the sponses on the side of the building that were direct light, for that reason, we need to see those as well.
Well, absolutely. And those, but those weren't a fault of the planning board. That was actually a fault of, of the planning itself.
We need to see what their intent is for what they're doing. And we cannot reference another building, another case.
No, there's not referencing anything, so, okay.
Earlier in the conversation, we said it's like the other one on the same property. Well, that doesn't apply. It's a different building, it's a different submission.
So.
So 6, 7, 14.
So do you, so you want new floor plans? No, because that's seven, so.
And they also have to.
Because I have.
Go by the fire department's review. And they said they can get the one and a half sides. They need access to three complete sides of the building, which means that may change the elevations.
Okay.
The backfill.
So they can take these comments from the departments as a preliminary review and apply them so when the submission comes in, they've answered the question.
But you're deeming the floor plans that were submitted today are not adequate? Just for my.
And they were not on time. They were given today.
Okay, fine, fine. So adequate, okay.
So that was the motion.
And if you can get ahold of the Highway Department and see if they're aware of the rail trail encroachment.
This isn't their oversight, but I guess I could ask them, yes.
They're approving an access over the rail trail.
They're not approving it. It's DOT is approving it.
That's what I said.
Oh, I thought you said hi, oh, the Highway Department at the state level. Yes, absolutely.
Wouldn't you have to show them local tax maps?
It should.
Maybe the easiest way to do it rather than try to get through the state, check the tax map and sort of anything better. If in fact they're doing, if in fact they're doing anything with the rail trail, they have to go through what was the old DREAD, Department of Recreation. Because they are the now owners of it, the state of New Hampshire, yes, but what department? DREAD.
But that's what happened in Clamont when they opened it up over there. They can't even put a sign on that whole strip of Washington Street from Reeves to the other.
I am definitely going to call DOT if they made a mistake in approving this driveway. I will get a rescind.
The only reason I can get across it is because in 1870, when they built it, they gave two railways. So I had two passages to go over outside of that.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
No.
I'll second it.
We have a second by Terry. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it and we will not accept it as complete.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I believe we have a right to have a say here, but I know this is the same being postponed, but I believe we have a right to say, I want to read a couple things into the record, please.
Go ahead.
First of all, we would like to believe that our submission was complete, so I'm very shocked to hear this. The fact that we were not allowed to do our presentation prevented us from answering a lot of the board's justifiable questions. We couldn't answer any one of your questions, but we were not allowed to. And number three, Mr. Spaulding recused himself and yet he came in and participated in the meeting. I want that written on the record and I want that known that we object to that strenuously. We'll be back next and we'll be glad to go over this with you again. The presentation is going to be the same, but we're just a little frustrated that we're not allowed. We don't feel that we were given due process here. Mr. Chairman?
We cannot allow you to go on with a presentation if we do not deem it complete. That's the law. That's the way it is. I'm sorry, but three of those things were checked off that we're not here. I'm sorry. Even the fire department didn't know how to get around the building. Everything wasn't there for them.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Spaulding does have a right to participate as a private citizen.
That's correct.
Yes, and I want to make that point myself.
But the hearing was never open. How can he participate if the hearing was never open?
All I have to do is be recognized by the chairman, sir. You are not God, here the chairman is.
That's, that's all that we have. He was not, he was not weighing in on your unit, you were just telling them what, where to go and what to see. And DREAD is the department that's in charge of that rail trail.
Okay, thank you. We'll be back next month. I'll coordinate with Christina tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, your honor, thank you.
So this can go with, yes. Okay, our next order of business is two zero two three S D F P dash one, Taylor Made, owner requests a final review for a minor subdivision property identified as map two three one, lot zero three one, located at four one seven Bradford Road in the rural zoning district. And do we have a presenter?
The owner, Taylor Made, is going to be presenting tonight.
Okay, so. It's the lot line, so everything is there, right? So we have a motion to accept.
So move. Second.
Ray, move. Oh, sorry.
Her move.
Her move.
Bert second.
Bert second. All of the papers say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, any abstentions? The ayes have it. And you may have a floor.
Thanks for the entertainment. We consider it an obligation.
It is. Wait, are you going to present?
Yes.
You have to present your application.
Yeah, we just opened.
You have to present the application. You literally have to give the presentation, so you don't.
We got them saying they don't want to, they don't want to go away, they're doing.
I didn't know what, so, no, so what you can do is if you don't have much to say about it, although maybe whoever could speak better, I know Jenny and I have spoken this.
The big issue is to work out with the neighbor to take a non-compliant lot and make it compliant. They wanted a little extra land.
Absolutely.
Exactly right.
So this is where we already have the building just built.
This is, this is the original lot.
Yeah.
Here.
So worked out with Sharon to acquire this piece of property, which actually was like this way.
Mm-hmm.
And we took this much, made this compliant, and left that much of that to make that lot compliant.
Okay.
So that's what the state wants for a sub-ex.
So you're making a non-compliant lot.
Compliant.
Compliant, and you're not affecting one and making it non-compliant.
So that's where the surveyor came in, and we messed around with his post to give us a little more driveway, and then he said, let's see if we can do it, he did the calculations, and everything, and that kind of scattered. It's good news. So A and B are going to lot thirty one, and the rest is staying with.
Yeah.
This one, lot thirty. And this one over here. So they both comply, and the state's happy, and the county's happy. Anything we can do? Any other, any other comment? I'll open it to the public, is any questions or comments from the public? Hearing and hearing, none, I'll come back to the board, which.
They both comply?
Yes.
They have the proper road frontage?
In that, in that area, I believe that's Gutt Town Water and Sewer, doesn't it?
Oh, it doesn't?
No, it doesn't, and the original, the, the four, four one seven.
Which is?
Is the one that just shows foundation and driveway.
Okay.
Has, um, neither of them comply with road frontage for the, for the rural zone. So with that said, they're legal non-conforming in regards to road frontage.
Oh, yeah.
In regards to road frontage, when Taylor Made, I apologize, I don't know your first name, or your last, I know Jenny's, I apologize, when this gentleman stated that, I think he was talking in regards to overall size of, of the property. But, but four one seven was legal non-conforming prior to, they didn't have to do this.
Yeah.
They made it more conforming.
Yeah.
More, and they didn't decrease the conformity, if that's a word, of the other lot. They didn't decrease how non-conforming it is, because, yeah.
Yeah.
It's just the frontage is.
They went, they went from a hundred to a hundred and forty seven point six frontage.
Well, we got a driveway frontage, right? So everybody knows.
You had a driveway permit years and years and years ago, yes, yes. You're, you're legal non-conforming, and always happened.
The other lot is legal because it has seventy, ninety three, ninety three on that one, and a hundred and forty feet on Sunshine Court, which is a private road, so that's good.
So grandfathered status of the, of the entrance, and making the lot conforming. So if you had two broken arms, he fixed, one of them had been that way so long, you're going to leave it that way, and the other, the other one he's fixing.
Actually, wait, I'd like to correct, I made a mistake. The original property is conforming, I apologize, because the road frontage is Sunshine Court. It's, it's the four one seven that has become more conforming with this added land.
That's what I stated.
Right, sorry, I stated they were both not conforming, that is not true. The, one is fully conforming.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Yeah, motion to approve, I don't have anything with its number on here. You read, you read the number, we'll go ahead. Two oh two three S D F P dash one, Tyler, me, kill me.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, any abstentions? The ayes have it.
All right.
Now it's okay.
Now it's all right.
I'll send you a formal notification.
You want it to be signed, or you want to wait for my line?
I love those signed, and does anyone have a Sharpie? Although I don't think I'm, we need Sharpies.
We don't.
Oh, we also will need a Mylar to submit.
Chris has mentioned.
They usually, everyone waits to make sure there's no exceptions, absolutely.
I don't, we don't have.
So bring it in whenever, okay.
We don't have a stamp.
Yeah, there's one.
I don't know, we don't have a title law. Well, these are for us anyway, can we go here and here?
Absolutely, sign wherever you want, if that's what you're worried about, and if you could do both, that'd be great. And you're right, we don't have to use the Sharpie on these.
Okay, so we're all set here, and we can be like Leonardo.
Thank you.
Just sign wherever.
You can sign wherever you want, in that lower corner, right, I know. Anywhere, except for where the chairperson, Dave has to sign there.
So you're okay, and I'm on the line.
So, all right, I'm going to go here.
Can't read mine anyway, so when you go there, I'll go behind you here.
That's supposed to be black to be legal.
Probably have to sign over there, but they said you can, it was blue now, it's not very clear.
Really?
Keep changing them, I got it.
Nice.
Basically, just so it picks up.
Yeah, you got two on. Okay, why don't you go first? Give you a room.
Now, let me just, I'm just going to check this, make sure you did the application as complete.
There, I made it a little smaller.
Could you just sign the N O D?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just to make sure, I have to copy your signature, it's never very good. And this is probably the first time I'd ever gotten the signatures accurately, too, when I'm actually off.
Autograph.
Yeah, autograph, signature autograph, ahead of time, and the Mylar, hopefully, I'll shoot out by next, and I'll obviously bring it up if I have. That can go in.
I think this is, this is that, that's, I think it all came with it.
Yep.
It's all mine here.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, our next order of business is two zero two three S D F P dash two, Sheridan Mead, owner Patrick Tombrosky, agent, requests a final review for a minor subdivision property was identified as map two sixty, lot zero zero one, located at four eight zero, Unit Road in the rural zoning district, and a request to continue by the applicant.
I think there was some slight missing of like a right of way or something, but I'm not sure, so I believe there were some alterations, and he just asked.
Have it continued.
I need to step down.
Okay, but we're not going to see it anyway.
You're going to vote on.
We're just going to.
We're just going to continue, all right. I'll make a motion that we continue, oh, two zero two three S D F P dash two, two, six P M, three twenty one, twenty three.
Bingo.
We have a second.
Second.
And we have a second by Bert. All of the papers say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, any abstentions?
Right here.
One extension, be Ray.
Right next to me.
Right next to you.
Okay. Minutes of January twenty twenty three.
Okay, the agenda.
I went through a quick vision, didn't see anything. I would move the minutes of January ten, twenty twenty three.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All of the papers say aye.
Aye.
All of the opposed, any abstentions?
All stay.
One extension?
I was an aye, but I want to make a comment.
Yeah.
I read these things very, very detailed, and every word in here passed as a fact checker, I, she blew me away this time, everything. There's a lot of words in there, a lot of everything, and it's really good, Maris.
She's a hell of a moderator, too.
Wow, you don't get to see that again.
Good moderator, too.
I thought so.
Yes, yeah, she stood right there, non-tired, ready to pull me away from the mic or anybody else.
Back to administration, the master plan survey, we need to either approve or fix.
Modify. One thing I will say is I've called, I've, I've gotten a quote, which just doesn't really include you guys, but it's, it is funny, who are mailing, there's four thousand dwellings, I think there's three thousand nine hundred ninety six dwellings in Newport presently, listed by the United States Postal Service. Getting a service to do this, because it's pretty cumbersome, I, I have a quote for roughly three thousand dollars to mail one of, one of these with two envelopes, one for a return, that would have a return, and then, and then the original envelope, I think they're going to put something on it like, you know, help, you know, I forget what he said, said a good like, help frame your town, or help, help decide where your town goes, something like that, like so people like maybe get more intrigued to open it, kind of a, for the survey inside. And so that came to like three thousand dollars, and they would do all the printing, they would do all, you know, the folding of the paper stuffing, the two envelopes mailing, and then we would have to pay forever, oh, no, they would have to put a stamp on it, or they could drop it off at, we have places, I'm going to have the offices to drop it off at, too. And I'm going to try to do an online survey, that people can go online and do it, but that, and I plan on doing that with whatever you approve, I'll ma, I'll mimic it.
Is there any possible way to do it, insert to the Newport Times?
Uh, and just what, in like an envelope with the return envelope?
Yeah, put it in with an envelope.
And then not do any mailings? I don't know, I have to ask the New York.
It's supposed to go out to every address in Newport, whether they get it or not, sometimes it doesn't.
Who?
Out for grabs.
And whether, I would hate to see it, the Newport Times thrown away if anyone did, and it be inside it. Uh.
No, I think this is important, and it's.
I think it should be standard.
The postage is actually really cheap, it's only like, that's only like seventeen cents of the post, because it's this weird, it's to, there's no, it's to every resident in unit one to whatever, and that's cheap, it's the copies, and the two envelopes, and then the paper, and making the copies, and again, if we recall what, not that this is, they're the, the gold standard, but if you recall what the Upper Valley was going to charge for this, it was easily double the price. Again, I could get, I could get more, but, more prices, but that's kind of just an internal.
No, I just, I think it's a, it's one of our missions, and we have to do it.
Absol, and I think, I think, I'd like it, if we can either make changes tonight and then approve on these changes, I'd love these, you see if I even wrote in April first as a mailing date, because I'd love to get these out, and then obviously, I will fill in the little x's, because I've got to get that survey online first to visit that place, and then I would, I do think, you're right, I just realized this, I guess it would have to be decided tonight.
Yeah, I think I can do that, but.
Of the public hearing.
What is this, it says Richard School, Plimber will host a community forum at Richard School.
It doesn't, it doesn't have to be, that's where they were held last time, so it's a larger forum.
Yeah.
For a public, we do have to hold, I think, at least one public hearing, and, and, for, for vocally communicating on the master plan. And so we wanted, that, that was in the last survey, and, oh, shoot, twenty twenty three, I saw a mistake already, twenty twenty, right at the top. Um, the, the, uh, we, we could come up with a date so it goes out, or I could just nix that, but it would be a great thing to go out, if people wanted to, we have to post a public forum, and then schedule that.
That's the best place.
Has the superintendent approved?
The Richard School?
Yeah.
The use of the Richard School, no, I mean, I'm sure I could get that checked out tomorrow if you guys came up with a date, or.
So you're going under the assumption that we would, we would overflow this room?
That's what was done last time, although, or you could just have it, have it here if it's, and we're not thinking that it's like Bert, possibly not overflowing this room, and that might be easy.
I don't believe we need the autocorium.
And I don't believe we need to go beyond this room.
Yeah, Bert might be right, and that would make my, that would make, because I could easily email you guys out tomorrow, what dates do you think were best for you, and we probably wouldn't do them, if this went out April first, and we wait sixty days for things to come back, April, May, we could either have an open forum in May, because that might also perk people's interest in filling this out if they still have it shoved in a corner, or May or June, I would, I think May would be a better time.
Well, May would be a good time to have this, have the town meeting.
Have surveys there?
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely, for, we could have extra surveys, and I could have a little bin, they could, they could bring them to my office, they could request them if they didn't get one at my office, absolutely.
So let's, let's change the Richard School to.
To here.
Here.
Perfect, I've got that, then, that's easy, and.
Just flatten that wrong.
Now, are we talking the deliberative session, or are we talking the all-day voting session?
This is just the open forum for a discussion on the topics for the.
It won't be, it'll, it'll just, it'll be a standalone meeting.
Yeah, just open, master plan, open forum for public comment, and.
When she mentioned that they could, what they could do with the documents and et cetera, it's, it's going to be its own entity.
I was just, someone said if at the deliberative session, there could be copies of this for people to fill out if they wanted to, I could have them there, if they missed out.
They're thinking town at that day, that's all.
I mean.
As long, as long, as long as that due date is after.
And, and, and there could be people that one person in a household, like say, a husband and a wife, or one wants to fill it out, and another one has a different opinion, and they, in theory, they both should be able to fill out a survey for where they want it, but.
So that, so item C should be like June one, then?
Yeah.
So you, item C.
C.
Okay, please complete, yes, you're right, okay, wait, it's February, no, what, I made a mistake, I apologize, I wanted these to potentially go out for, in, in like two weeks, if we can get it approved, so then that would be March, oh, it should be, it should be May first, which would give sixty days.
Right, but if we want to have these.
It's complete. Yes, you're right. Okay, wait, it's February. No, what, I made a mistake, I apologize. I wanted these to potentially go out, or, in, in like two weeks, if we can get it approved. So then that would be March, oh, it should be, it should be May first, which would give sixty days.
Right, but if we wanna have these at deliberative, you gotta wait till after that, so that's what I'm saying, June first.
Okay. So, and then Ju, we wanted, okay, so let's go June one, uh, the take the survey online, that's me, change it to the B O S room, and I could send these out, too, before I give a final, if anyone sees an error, so.
The first one's in April?
Yeah, and.
Oh, and the voting's in May.
You've got thirty days to, to vote it.
So it could be May one.
When would you, when do you think it would be good to have, so we could get it on this paperwork, the public open forum? In, so we're, we're trying to get it in, in, in April or May, we could have.
Do it May.
Okay, so the May, your meeting in May, we have town meeting in May, right?
Correct.
That's on Tuesday, right?
Yeah, that's just the voting, he said, though, right? But the April one is the deliberative, that's the one.
Correct.
Right, so we, you meet on the sixteenth normally, for your normal meeting in May. We could have it the twenty-third or the thirtieth in this room, and I could double-check to make sure no one else is in this room in May, but I think, I, I think it's probably open, I could, I could double-check the twentieth or the thirtieth for the open forum. Maybe the thirtieth, just to give us more time.
That's holiday.
Oh, shit.
We'll do the twenty-third, whatever that.
Okay, let's do the twenty-third.
We have a twenty-first meeting, though.
We have a sixteenth meeting.
No, it's March, never mind, I'm sorry.
We have a May, May sixteenth meeting, you wanna just say we have, and I'll make sure this works, the twenty-third, because I'd like it on here, and then if I can get these, I could get these mailed by, by like February twenty eighth, like by the end of the month, which would be nice, because we really wanted January first, so we're two months behind, but that's all right. So let me do Tuesday, May twenty-third. At six P, at six P M, in the B O S room, which then I don't have to, I could double-check that myself. June first, and. They also will help me maybe tighten this up a little, it'll look the same, not that the wording, but maybe we won't have so many spaces in between and stuff, it'll look a little neater.
Yeah, I think with those changes, you can go ahead and clean it up.
First page. Yeah, okay, so then, um.
I think this is a lot more livable for people to do, rather than that last one, it was a horror show. I would like to turn paper.
It was, yeah, it's, it was homework, for sure. Okay, this is great.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, on B, take the survey online by visiting, or is that just gonna be next?
It would be visiting. Um.
Well, you have to put the website.
I've gotta get, I've gotta get the link, and it's gonna be on, and I, I, people have told me how to do this, I have to do like an L R Q, so it's gonna be on the website, and then it will be click on the L R Q code, and then you fill it out and you submit. E. So, and the word visiting, not visit, online by visiting, I think, would be the proper.
Would it be under the, um, um, planning board, um, webpage?
I don't, no, I'd probably put it on the main, it's town master plan, I'd, I'd like it on the front page, but if they don't allow me to, I'll put it under the planning board page.
Yeah, the prior one was.
I mean, it would be nice.
T I N Y U R L dot com.
What was it?
T I N Y U R L dot com. Or T M, I guess it might be T M.
T M N Y?
It's a dot, maybe.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll fit, and then, again, I think it would be nice to have it on the top page.
So Newport, New Hampshire dot net.
Um, thank you.
Tiny dot.
Oh, yeah, tiny U R L.
I have no idea what that is.
That's the online survey. Someone, so I should know how to do this, gosh darn it, if someone knew how to do it in two thousand and ten, so I'm gonna figure that out. Okay, that seems easy enough, then.
Econ developer, I'll be able to figure that out.
Oh, that's where it was, that's, you're right, the econ. This, you know what, who did this? That's why it's this weird, the upper va, we paid a fortune for this flash time, because they did the whole thing.
Yeah.
That's why, I'm like, who?
That's why we ended up with a block.
Okay, so I'll give this back. Thank you.
You can burn it.
Okay.
Thanks.
I'll, I should be able to figure it out pretty easily, to link it.
Do I have a motion?
I actually have one.
Yeah.
Comment. Um, number five, or question five?
Yes.
Where it talks about, uh, would you like to see or see more businesses and services that you would like to see more of in Newport? I'm assuming that second block of questions there is where you would like to see said businesses and or services?
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good, that's right. What's missing there? Community, land use, economic development. So. Right. There's a freaking question missing. Okay, hold on, hold on, we should be able to find it in what, um, what, uh. Ken just gave me. It's six, wait, hold on. Nope, six is there. To what extent do you agree? Seven and eight are there.
Could that just be?
No, it just said.
I think it's, it's like.
Could you just make that five A?
Where, if you, if you take that block and superimpose it to the bottom of number five, and in that gray space, where would you like to see it?
It's like a continuation.
Or just write five, I, I agree, maybe, or I could just do six, the, and other numbers could change, but I think they, they work in tandem.
Yes.
Where mostly would you like to see development, I guess?
Yeah.
Let's see, that would be question on the, on the original.
Yeah.
Question seven and eight, where in Newport would you like to see development?
Yes.
In, uh, yeah, development. That's what it, that's what it said in the original.
Okay, so it was, and it was question number seven. Now, do we want, why don't we just make it, do you think it could be question five A, because it correlates? Okay, do you guys all agree with that? Okay, five A, I like that, and, and I'm gonna write. Where in Newport would you like to see development? That's what I'm gonna pose the question?
Yeah.
If we're, if we're done with that question.
What do we go for a question?
Um, well, every ten years, we have to update the master plan, and so we gotta look forward, and I wonder if we've addressed, uh, the locations for, uh, the homeless people in their tent compound.
What was this?
I don't think we did the last time.
We're gonna put them in the tiny houses down the river?
Oh, I thought that was.
I missed, was this a joke that I missed?
You didn't, you didn't, you didn't hear my question.
I didn't hear it.
Well, it's ten years that we have to do this, and the way things are changing.
Yes.
That we, have, have we got any plans in here where we would allow the homeless people to put their tents up?
Well, actually, I hear homeless people are held at the Ritz-Carltons or the fanciest hotels in the area, from what other states are now doing, so I don't think we would have worries with that.
Okay, well, it's, I hope everybody listening gets that as humor.
Or, and mine was too, although mine's reality, not humor. Absolutely, I think I'm gonna re-forward these out, then, when I do get this, these people to do it, I think they're gonna make it look a little prettier, and I think it's either, even gonna be on a little bigger-sized paper, and then I'll just show you what it looks like, but no wording will be changed, no wording, and no, no organization for, like, it won't, all of a sudden, you won't see something before the other, nothing like that. It just, I think it might look a little prettier, but obviously, nothing, uh, nothing changes in, in organization of it, and thank you for that one thing that was kind of hanging out there, and I like it being five A, because it correlates.
But don't lighten it up too much. It needs to look, it needs to look businesslike. It needs to look more important than it means needs to look pretty.
Oh, I wasn't trying to make it look pretty. I was trying to, I think it could look more professionally done than what's, what's here, that's what I meant, so it would look more, more businesslike than, than our project. That's what I was kind of thinking. That's my, my opinion, and some of it is like the roughed-in. I don't know.
It's a rough draft.
Ru, I think they could make it look a little tighter, professional, but that I would show you, too, and again, it.
Good, good space, you just might, might cut down the cost a little bit.
Well, I think they're gonna have, yeah, fewer pages and, um, and I'll also tell you what they're gonna write on the outside, because you, I think they do this with a lot of towns, and they just, they had a really good saying, and I'm like, so it catches people's eyes, and I'm like, oh, that's great, now I can't remember it, so I'll let you know, it's like, contribute to the future of your town, or have input, be invol, you know, be involved in, in Newport's future, something like that. I thought, I thought it could catch people's eye, thought it was a great idea. That's it on my side.
Do we have a motion to? No, except.
I make a motion that we, upon final draft edits, as discussed tonight, that we, um, accept an issue.
Okay, so meaning it comes back to us.
Comes back to us for that final review.
Yep.
Per what we talked about, and then if it's good, then we.
Via email, via email. Yeah, and that I haven't made any clearer, absolutely, and then, because I just wanna try to get this out, yeah, absolutely.
So, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Mike seconded. All of the favors say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Ayes have it. Thank you for your time and effort putting this all together.
It's like a year and a half.
I know, I know. Well, I just, right, I know, trust me.
The ten years is, when, when you gotta do it, it doesn't say that's when you gotta finish it. The finish line can be moved.
I did hear him talking about in the Board of Selecting Budget Meeting, that they get that line for master plan, so you might have money in it.
Did, they had a lot, I did mention to Hunter that I had about a three thousand dollar fee, was that the line item?
Uh, I don't recall if it had any money in it. I think there was a line item, but I don't know if there was any dollar amount in, on the line.
He didn't balk when I said, and I actually think the price is pretty, that's less.
You're gonna do it, bottom line.
And it's less, it's seventy-five cents, a delivery with the return envelope.
They're doing the N R I for the, for the Conservation Commission, so that's gonna be part of the master plan, the town master plan, so. Did you get a robo-collar?
Okay. All right, we had a, that's it for administration. Communications, any other communications to the board? I'll accept public input. Seeing and hearing none, we will come back to the board.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All of the favors say aye?
Aye.
All of the opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Thank you very much.
And Laura brought up some.
I know, some good stuff.
We couldn't get to them earlier, we got a little heated.
Oh, that's all right. I just wanna understand, because I feel like I'm not gonna get it to you.
I think what we need to do is.